Tonight's meeting to order, roll call please.
Braden Hargit, Maravella McCarthy, Whitmore White.
Here.
Please stand for tonight's invocation and buzzer vision. Tonight's invocation will be provided by Pastor Carlson with Grace Church.
Thank you. So we pray. God have mercy. Thank you so much for your goodness to us. What a wonderful day, a wonderful season, what a wonderful time to be alive and to be part of this country and part of this community. Thank you so much for our leaders and for our citizens gathered here to celebrate things, to announce things, to decide things, to do the work of local government. And thank you so much that you are in charge of our lives. Things aren't always easy, but you're always there. Thank you, Father. You're in the dark, you're the light. Even as our bodies fail, you've given us, our bodies have given us each breath, and so you have blessed us greatly. The Scripture says, "Every good gift and every perfect gift comes from above, from the Father of life, with whom is no variation nor shadow turning." And so rejoice in that, Father. I pray, help us tonight to be thankful people, help us to be sober earnest people, help us to have some fun, help us, Father, to live the life you've given to us, to accomplish the things you've told us to do. And again, may we always know that you are with us even to the end of the age as we do so. And I pray it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For final, I need a motion to approve the December 21st, 2025. It should be January.
Yeah.
January 21st, 2025, regular board meeting minutes.
Subtle.
Subtle.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Hargit, Maravella, McCarthy, Whitmore, White.
Aye.
Motion carried. We move on to mayor's report. And I was asked by the family of Robert Bob Aravet, they were having a hundredth birthday celebration of the VFW on Saturday, February 8th, and I was asked to go over there and present. Just have some comments, some words. So we did a proclamation, which I'd like to read, just to get it into the minutes. Honoring Robert Bob Aravet on the occasion of his hundredth birthday. Whereas the village of Winter Harbor proudly recognizes and honors its residents who have reached extraordinary milestones in life. And today we celebrate the hundredth birthday of a distinguished member of our community, Robert Bob Aravet. And whereas Robert Bob Aravet is a highly decorated World War II veteran and a recipient of the Purple Heart, a recognition of his courage and sacrifice in service to our nation. And whereas Bob honorably served his country and received letters of appreciation from the military and federal government, including one personally signed by President Harry Truman, and recognition of his dedication and valor. And whereas Bob vividly recalls his enlistment journey, from the day he traveled to Indiana to board a troop train to California, a two-week journey with no disembarking, during which he quickly volunteered for kitchen duty, knowing which would be the best way to ensure he always had something to eat. A testament to his foresight and resourcefulness. And whereas after his honorable military service, Bob moved to Illinois in 1947, joining his brother Harold on the Glen Raven Dairy Farm, where he lived and worked until his dispersal. And whereas in July of 1950, he transitioned to Davis Truck Service, a growing business that became a significant enterprise in Zion, where he worked with dedication, skill, and commitment for over 35 years, until March 1985, 1986. And whereas Bob has been a cornerstone of our community, having lived in Zion and Winter Harbor for generations. So long, in fact, that some of us would say, "Long before I was born." And whereas his remarkable century of life is filled with resilience, wisdom, hard work, and a lasting impact on his family, friends, and the community. Now therefore, on this special occasion, Mayor Dr. Michael Bruno on behalf of the village of Winter Harbor proudly congratulates Robert Bob Aravet on his historic milestone birthday and expresses the deepest appreciation for his service to our country and his invaluable contributions to our community. Eight day of February 2025. I was able to sit down, I have a discussion, a 15-minute discussion. Being a hundred years ago, my dad was in World War II as well, and he'd be 99 on February 22nd. So it's like talking to my dad. This guy knew everything. Talked 15 minutes, it was probably one of the best conversations I had with the first in a long time. He was very appreciative of me being there and presenting him with this proclamation. Family came up and couldn't be more gracious that I was able to attend this. I was impressed. I was very impressed with Bob. And I told him that, and I thanked the family many times for allowing me to be part of his hundredth birthday celebration. But, you know, this is what I like to do as mayor. I love going and recognizing people and showing them how much we appreciate them. So I just wanted to read this and get it into the minutes. So that's all I have to say. So the next item on there is, "I need a motion to approve of the resolution creating the Richard Dick Robards Community Service Awards."
Subtle.
I'm gonna read the resolution. Whereas Richard Dick Robards was a devoted public servant, a respected leader, and a beloved member of the village of Winter Harbor. And whereas Dick Robards dedicated his life to serving his country, family, and community through the service in the U.S. Army. His longstanding commitment as a village trustee for 20 years and his volunteer efforts as a firefighter, church choir member, and supporter of numerous civic organizations. And whereas Dick Robards was instrumental in mentoring individuals like myself, fostering local businesses such as Harvard Brewing and championing community development projects that enriched the lives of Winter Harbor residents. And whereas his unwavering commitment to community service, integrity, and the betterment of the village of Winter Harbor left a lasting impact on all who knew him. And whereas the village of Winter Harbor wishes to honor his remarkable legacy by recognizing individuals who exemplify his dedication to volunteerism and community service. Now therefore, be it resolved by the village board of Winter Harbor, Illinois as follows. Section 1, Establishment of the Richard Dick Robards Community Service Award. There is hereby established the Richard Dick Robards Community Service Award, which shall be awarded annually to an individual or organization that has demonstrated outstanding dedication to volunteerism, public service, and the betterment of the village of Winter Harbor. Section 2, Criteria for Selection. Recipients of the Richard Dick Robards Community Service Award shall exemplify the following qualities: A strong commitment to public service and volunteerism within the village of Winter Harbor, demonstrated leadership and initiatives or projects that positively impact the community; a spirit of selflessness, integrity, and dedication to the well-being of others; and a significant contribution to the enhancement of community life, civic engagement, or local development. Section 3, Presentation of the Award. The Richard Dick Robards Community Service Award shall be presented annually at a public event or village board meeting, with the recipient being honored for their contribution to the community. The award may be presented in various forms, such as a plaque or certificate, to honor their contributions to the community. Section 4, Effective Date. This resolution shall be in full force and effective from and after its passage and approval. So I read that, I need a motion and a second.
Subtle.
Roll call.
Hargit, Maravella, McCarthy, Whitmore, White.
Motion carried. Couple other things I wanted to talk about this award. Richard Dick Robards was a dedicated family man, a committed public servant, and a beloved member of the Winter Harbor community. Born on November 2nd, 1944, at St. Teresa Hospital in Waukegan, Illinois, Dick lived a life marked by service, generosity, and unwavering dedication to his family and community. Dick married the love of his life, Judy, on May 7th, 1966. Just 15 days later, he was drafted into the U.S. Army, serving his country from 1966 to 1968. Their marriage spanned 57 years, was filled with love, commitment, and the joy of raising their three children, Matthew, Douglas, and Judy. After living on 11th Street for eight years, Dick and Judy briefly moved out of state, but quickly realized their hearts belonged in Winter Harbor. In 1988, they returned and settled on Meadowport, where they remained a cornerstone of the community. Dick was known for his strong moral compass, tenacity, and boundless generosity. He was a man who fought for what he believed in and never hesitated to lend a helping hand. His dedication to volunteerism knew no bounds. If there was a need, he stepped up without hesitation. Those who knew him best described him as honest, charismatic, and deeply compassionate. He was a man of integrity, someone who could always be relied upon to do the right thing. His greatest joys in life came from his family, particularly his children and grandchildren, and his passion for volunteer work. Dick's professional life was defined by hard work and dedication. He was a skilled toolmaker, working for Johnson Motors and later Abbott, where he eventually retired. Up beyond his career in manufacturing, he dedicated 25 years as a volunteer firefighter for Winter Harbor. In his early years on the force, he served without pay, embodying his deep sense of civic duty. Later in life, he worked as a chauffeur for the Cancer Treatment Centers of America, a job he cherished. Even after retiring from his chauffeur position, he continued to volunteer, giving his time selflessly to the Saki Funeral Home as a greeter, offering comfort to grieving families. Dick's contributions to the village of Winter Harbor were unparalleled. He served as a village trustee for an impressive 20-year service, 20 consecutive years. Championing initiatives that enhanced the quality of life for residents. Beyond government service, he was deeply involved in civic nonprofit organizations, reflecting his lifelong commitment to giving back. He was a longtime choir member and financial counter at his church for over 50 years, a member of the Bagpipe Organization in Kenosha, and an active volunteer for CTCA and Saki Funeral Home. He was also instrumental in helping a young entrepreneur build a thriving local business, Harvard Brewing. Winter Harbor's hometown beer, recognizing the potential of a passionate local brewer. Dick provided mentorship, guidance, and unwavering support to help turn a dream into a reality. His encouragement and advocacy helped establish Harvard Brewing as a beloved gathering place for the community, fostering local pride and economic growth. A man of many interests, Dick had an adventurous spirit. He was passionate about travel and especially loved scuba diving. That I didn't know. He frequently traveled to the Caribbean to explore the underwater world. His passion for the sport led him to teach his youngest son how to scuba dive, fostering a lifelong love for the ocean in him. Dick also inspired his eldest son to follow in his footsteps as a toolmaker, mentoring and guiding him through the trade. Dick's legacy is defined by his unwavering dedication to family, community, and service. His decades-long commitment as a firefighter, public servant, and volunteer touched countless lives, improving the village of Winter Harbor in measurable ways. His leadership as a trustee and his tireless volunteer efforts set a high standard of civic engagement. Honoring his legacy, Richard Dick Robards embodied the spirit of service and dedication. He firmly believed that if everyone volunteered just a little of their time, the world would be a better place. His tireless efforts to make Winter Harbor a stronger, more connected community make him more than deserving of an award and this honor. His values of integrity, commitment, and selfless align perfectly with the purpose of such recognition. His impact will continue to inspire future generations to serve their communities with the same unwavering dedication. It is for his love of this great community and lifelong dedication to Winter Harbor that the village of Winter Harbor has created the Richard Dick Robards Community Service Award, to honor those dedicated to community service for the betterment of our communities. I'll just say that I sat right where Kevin Braden was in 2005 when I became a trustee. And Dick sat right where Dana is right now. And I remember the first meeting I was at, it was totally, I didn't know what I was doing. He leaned over and he said, "If you ever need, ever have to ask any questions, please don't hesitate to ask." And I did. I asked a lot of questions, sometimes before the meeting, sometimes right during the meeting, and sometimes after. He always, always, always had needs. He was a mentor for me. He really was. When I became mayor in 2017, I can almost count on him walking in my office upstairs on Thursday. I'm in my office on Thursday upstairs. And we'd sit, we'd talk for about an hour. He was a very gracious and very loving individual. And I miss him every day. I really do. I look forward to seeing him when he was here. I just want everyone to know, if anybody has anything else to say about Dick Robards, please. But that's all I have to say.
Mayor.
Yes. I just want to add, I don't know the family well, but, you know, actually I'm not sure others can, but Dick was a mentor, I think, to all the trustees up here and the others that have come and gone since then. I know I can speak for Trustee Braden, who isn't here. I know Trustee Levin, who recently left the board, and I'm sure all the others. And I don't take it lightly that I still consider this Trustee Robards seat. When I came on the board, I sat right here as well for about six or eight years or so, next to Dick, and relied on him a lot. And even though a few years, Buddy was in there for a couple of years after that. But, you know, I still consider Dick's seat when I sit, and I don't take that lightly there. And not only did the trustees rely on him, but I know that for many years during Maravoy's administration and Maravich's administration, they, you know, relied on him really as the leader among the trustees. And I know Maravoy wasn't one to really want to be out in public a lot and do things, but he relied on Trustee Robards to represent the village in that. And he did so at any time that Maravoy couldn't be here. You know, he knew that, you know, Dick would handle things. And everybody relied on him as the mayor pro tem whenever he was there and knew that the village was in good hands. And he's definitely been missed.
Yes. 26 years ago, I met Dick. We both ran for trustees. And what wasn't mentioned in any of this is his sense of humor. It was very quiet. And I knew that he was a Star Wars fan. So when we ran as trustees, I started calling him Roby One Kenobi. And that kind of stuck with him. Not many people knew that, but when we had the COVID, the vaccine, and he was a city of hope. I saw this figure standing there with a balding head, and I'm standing there waiting in line to get our COVID shot to be taken to the place. And I said, "That's gotta be Roby One Kenobi." And he goes like this. "Oh, no, it's you." And I asked him one time about his tool and die work. I said, "What's the best thing about doing tool and die?" He says, "Tell him the engineer it won't work." And I said, "That's really great." But, you know, sitting there at that chair where Dana is, we had this little contest to adjourn the meeting to see who could say so moved faster. And we would sit there looking at one another, watching the mayor with his mouth. He would win and I would win, and we would always laugh when we did do that. But the one driving force on the Public Works Building was Dick. Whenever there was any little bit of extra money, he said, "When can we get the Public Works Building done?" That was the number one thing that he really had. Because it was falling down around our ears, and we knew that. And unfortunately, he passed away before it was completed. But, you know, he was the driving force behind it. And like everything, he was very gentle. He was kind. When he disagreed with you, it wasn't an argument, it was a dialogue. And you got to understand what Dick was all about. But like I said, his sense of humor, and I just played off of each other on that all the time. And that's what I looked forward to is when we got together, just to kind of have a little commotion here on the board, because it gets too serious at times.
In the minutes, we put sense of humor in quotes or something. I mean, that's very subjective.
Hey, he liked my father.
I grew up with the family. I grew up on Ninth Street with my dad, Ray Chivadello. So, yeah, it goes back a long way. I golfed with him for years. I worked at ONC before I became a union electrician. So I was on the ONC golf league for years. I was telling him the story of why he used to tell us to, sometimes not to play in the yard and, you know, go over into the yard across the street, because that was Baldwin Scrabble's yard. It was a big field. And I was just, he was that type of person. He was a good man. He hung out at the Public Works all the time. He was a staple out there. That's why he fought for it like I did. He really cared about it, and he knew that was part of the community that meant something. Definitely will be missed. He always wanted, he would tell me when we were golfing, he'd show up before me and we were waiting, and he's like, "Well, I'm older than you. I get to go first." And that was part of his, you know, that was him to achieve. I'm glad that we're doing this.
I want to say, us girls in the outfits, we loved when Dick would come in. Because it wasn't always just business. He was very personable about showing the grandkids, making jokes. He was a wonderful person. But I have a story. My roommate worked for CTCA and became very friendly with Dick because Dick is kind of a candy apolic. And the girls would have candy dishes out, and so he would go from girl to girl and steal. He was thinking he was stealing, but they knew he was taking it. And they had a young adult male patient that wanted candy. But if it wasn't sugar-free, he couldn't have it. And he would become very upset. And Dick had a way of really soothing him and calming him and talking him. He was very good with the patients. And everybody at CTCA loved him. I know Tab loved him. So he was a great guy. That's it.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
He was. I absolutely loved Dick. After I ended up taking his seat, he would call me or I'd call him about once a month. And usually just a dish. I'm sure he just wanted the scuba, you know, and everything. But he was such a huge mentor. I mean, I came to him for a lot of things here, you know, especially my first year or so. Just about ideas off of him, just to ask him questions. But he was such a pillar in the community. I mean, he was absolutely instrumental, really, in where Public Works is today and where a lot of this community is today. So he just, he's definitely missed. I definitely missed chit-chatting with him either at, you know, I used to see him all the time at CTCA. We'd walk the halls or he'd get me candy. But, yeah, I definitely missed him. I missed bouncing ideas off of him. He was just a character. I mean, he was really one of a kind. He was an absolute character.
Very glad that we're able to honor his legacy in this in this way. Like Trustee McCarthy shared at the beginning, I think it was the first week I was on the board, he was like, "We're getting coffee." It wasn't a question. It was, "We're getting coffee." And then we just sat for hours talking about things and shared a love of Winter Harbor history. You look at a legacy like this, and it's one thing to see it on paper, like a resume, but to look around town and see his fingerprints on the Public Works Building. He was such a driver of getting the walking path around 38 acres, of helping to launch businesses in the community, to be a voice of reason, and to stubbornly drive things forward that needed to be driven. And so, yeah, it's a legacy. It's fingerprints around the community. And I'm glad that we have other people following that legacy that will be able to honor with his name going forward.
Anybody from the public like to say anything?
Kyle, are you?
Oh, I got some beers, sorry.
It just happened.
Yeah. You know, when I started Harvard Brewing, it was part-time. I still have a full-time job. The last two days before I quit at my dad's shop and went to Harvard Brewing full-time, I broke my foot and I couldn't brew by myself anymore. And Dick was the first one to, "Oh, yeah, I'll come help you brew." He was a home brewer. He knew everything. And so here I am limping around my first day as a full-time brewer, couldn't lift bags. I couldn't, you know, he'd help me stir in the grain. And while we were waiting for the mash to go, we'd play cribbage. He'd let me win sometimes. And when COVID came, I remember this time, because we had to shut down. You know, we couldn't sell our beer. And we're only, you know, a year and a half, two years in. And we got this, like, single operator canning machine to sell cans to go. And I remember our first beer we did, we decided on our amber. And we were there for probably four hours canning, like 200 cans of beer, one at a time. He'd fill them, I would seal it, and then we'd go and we'd have to put the label on. And it was just, he would just do it all. And he was just an amazing volunteer, helper to the community and to me and everyone. So tons of memories. I could go on forever. I mean, we talked to each other like we were in high school. Like my best friend now is 60 years older than me. He's a really good dude, and I can't think of a better person to have this reward than him.
Thank you, Kyle. Would you like to have Judy, the family, come up?
Does the rest of the village board want to be a member?
Thank you for sharing your husband with us all this time.
Yeah.
Thank you for sharing your husband with us.
You're very welcome.
Let me move on to the next item. Presentation of the Richard Dick Robards Award. This is an exciting, or excitement, and there is excitement in Winter Harbor as we work toward a successful future of our great community. As we strive for this bright future, it is vital not to forget how we got here and who led us along the way. Tonight is a prime example of our Tonight is a prime example of our commitment to honoring those who have played a significant role in bringing us to where we are today. I'm going to read up. Proclamation. Award of the Richard Dick Robards Community Service Award to Community 365. Whereas the Village of Winter Harbor and surrounding communities are strengthened by organizations dedicated to fostering civic engagement, volunteerism and public service. And whereas Community 365 has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to enhancing the quality of life in Winter Harbor, Zion and the surrounding areas through its diverse programs, partnerships and community building efforts. And whereas Community 365 collaborates with local organizations, including the Lions Club, Coonanis Club of Zion Benton, Winter Harbor Schools, North Point Marina and the Zion Historical Society, to develop and support initiatives that promote education, civic leadership and community wellbeing. And whereas Community 365 has been instrumental in supporting local schools through its Cyclones 365 program, providing essential funding for student field trips, classroom resources and teacher appreciation efforts, ensuring that students receive enriching educational experiences. And whereas Community 365 fosters youth leadership and empowerment through its Miss Cornerstone of Illinois Scholarship Program, encouraging young women to engage in service oriented projects and proudly representing the village and region. And whereas Community 365 has demonstrated a steadfast commitment to supporting local first responders and public safety personnel, raising funds for the Winter Harbor Police Department, providing meals for the Winter Harbor Fire Department and recognizing the surplus service of emergency personnel. And whereas Community 365 recently organized and led a successful fundraising initiative totaling $18,258.27 to provide Class A uniforms for the officers of the Winter Harbor Police Department, ensuring that officers are equipped with professional attire that reflects the honor and integrity of their service to the community. And whereas Community 365 promotes regional collaboration and civic leadership through its mayor's luncheons, bringing together municipal leaders from Winter Harbor, Zion Beach Park and Rogers to discuss and enhance community development efforts. And whereas Community 365 dedication to volunteerism, public service and civic engagement exemplifies the values and spirit of the Richard Dick Robards Award, making them a model organization for community driven impacts and progress. Now therefore be resolved to go to Winter Harbor hereby recognizes Community 365 for its exceptional service, unwavering dedication and positive impact on our community. We congratulate them on receiving this great honor dated this 18th day of 2025 in the Village of Winter Harbor Illinois. I'd like them to come forward. Get a picture as well? And we got a frame cramp. Tom, try to. Figures you could be in the picture.
So I just have to say something really quick because you all know that I'm very involved in community service, but my community service started at Memorial United Methodist Church when I ran their education program and then their staff parish committee. And my mentor was Dick Robards, who was Don Wilson and the choir. I called them the Stabler and Walder for the choir because they were always playing pranks on everybody. So this is very full circle for me and for our organization. And Lisa and I basically started this around my kitchen table. So thank you to you and thank you to your wonderful, wonderful family here. Thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion because what's your word?
I'm going to move.
Mayor?
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just going to see if I can say something, but we can do it after.
Absolutely.
Okay. I just want to say how happy I am that we can honor both Dick Robards and Community 365 at the same time. I'm really just so happy that your family can have this now as an annual thing and just to be remembered in this way. And then also to Community 365, on behalf of this board, I don't think we can thank you enough. You guys have dedicated so much time and just dedicating both money and time, which is huge, especially when you try to run a real tight budget municipality. It's everything, every little penny helps. You are constantly donating to not just parks and wrecks, but police, fire, the schools, any which way you can help. No one is more deserving of this award. I just want to personally thank you and I really want to highlight the incredible talent and confidence of Miss Cornerstone. Just being able to participate on the Miss Illinois stage is huge. I don't think people realize how, how few girls actually go every year and to have several girls that live in Winter Harbor on that stage is incredibly huge and just really highlights the strength of community support for young female leaders. It's just a lot of hard work and dedication. It brings a lot of community pride to Winter Harbor. I just want to say congratulations and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Jess. Thank you, Trustee Whitmore. Yes.
So I'll echo what Trustee Whitmore said and I'll try to do so without getting emotional myself. So full disclosure, my wife Lisa is currently president of the board of Community 365. So I can attest to the many hours that, that Dale put in in volunteering in this, but I had no say in, in this award. It was, it was told to me that they were receiving it, so. But as Trustee Whitmore said, just the amazing work that they do in developing the young ladies has had a huge impact on my daughter and just seeing her grow and compete on the Miss Illinois stage and develop. This just meant the world to us, so. Just, yeah, I don't, I can't do it. But just thank you for, for working for everything you've done for the village and especially for the, the police department. And I don't know, Chief, did you want to mention anything?
No. I mean, I can say that I've been law enforcement for a while.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, I've been in law enforcement for a while and support for the police kind of comes and goes at times. But the one constant I've noticed here is the support of the police and I don't think you could find that in very many other communities. So thank you for all that you've done.
Do you have one else? Very good. Thank you. I need a roll call.
Okay. Mary Bowlin.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
We'll keep carrying. We move on to village administrative report.
David? Just, just a few quick updates regarding economic development. You have, you have a summary that we, that staff has put together about some of the, some of the activities that we've been doing and moving ahead. It all starts with the work that the village has been doing for over 25 years, establishing consist districts, the purchase of land, like for example, the first of Sheridan. All of these, all of these, all of these things that the village has done has slowly come together and what we've been trying to do is put it together to start moving forward. As part of the summary, one of the things that I just want to touch base on is for example, location and tourism development. We have developed a website, discovertheharbor.com. That has been done in-house and what we've been trying to do is we've been trying to make it into a versatile platform in order for us to advertise everything the Village of Winter Harbor has to offer, both here in town and also to the developers.
Can I add that by in-house? That means that David, you can put in extra time to do the work on this and about that for those who don't know that, so.
Our development team.
He's too humble to.
I think he works twelve hours.
I was going to say, I don't think he's.
Yeah. He's too humble to.
And he wrote some of the others that was, that would otherwise probably be watching TV at home.
Yeah. Yeah. To explain that, so to interpret that in-house.
I don't know how you, I don't know how you do it. It's exciting. It's exciting to try to put the mazes together of how is this, what is going to be the future image of this village? We're strategically located. We're a lakefront community and the village has been taking these steps over the last 25 years to try to get it developed. So what is the missing piece? And that's what we've been trying to work on, trying to figure out what is that piece? And it's internally. There's a group of trustees and our village attorney that meet after hours to try to figure out what's the next step? What else can we do? We went to ICSI, the shopping center, the, which?
International Conference of Shopping Centers.
International Conference of Shopping Centers, yes. We went, we went in September. We put this website together because not only are we going to walk around, but what are we going to advertise? We're salespeople. What we need to do is we need to believe in the product that we're trying to sell. And right now, the village team believes in that product. And what we're trying to do is we're trying to encompass everything into this one website so people have the opportunity to see what we're seeing. So when I mean it's versatile, not only do we use this for developers, for example here, we, we're advertising the villages with all the natural amenities. If you see, we've tried with photography, with links, we're fishing communities. So once we put this together in September to try to advertise it, our core group ended up figuring out, well, there's a boat, there's a boat show in Chicago every year. So the team ended up putting together a, on the website, welcoming all of the people that were attending the fishing, the boat show in Chicago. We did pinpoint marketing, which pinpoint marketing really means we put a geofence around the Stevens, around the Donald D. Stevens Defense Center. And this website with an ad that we created internally was being pushed to all of the goers. We had 14,000 impressions. That's direct marketing. And how much did the village pay for that? Getting the word out is, and we're trying to do it unconventionally. We're, we're, something has to work. We did the same thing with the fishing expo, the Chicago Land Fishing Expo in Chopper. We did the same thing. Very promising, not as big as the Chicago Boat Show, but we collaborated during that fishing expo, we collaborated not only with North Point Marina, but we also collaborated with the Charter Fishing Cabinets. Why is that important? Because we're drawing people into the village. Based on that, we ended up, we evaluated that and we thought that we needed to put, highlight the restaurants. Well, great, people are going to come fishing. That was next. So the next process is we ended up putting all the restaurants in that welcome advertisement. Now we're going to take that website, we're going to duplicate it and now we're going to have a directory for all the restaurants. And again, figuring out what's the next step. Now we're going to start talking to North Point Marina. We have a great relationship with them. We have a great relationship with IDNR. The philosophy that the village now has is any, any, any benefits that they receive from the state, any investment from the state is an investment in the village. So now we're going to be working with them regarding the signage to make sure that we have a QR code sign so people know where to go and eat when they're down at the marina. Because the biggest challenges that we've been facing is how to get the people off the boats into town to start spending money so we can collect sales tax. So it's this unconventional approach, internal approach that, that we've been doing that we, we believe we're going to be successful in trying to find that missing piece. What we ended up doing is I did summarize a plan that we approved back in 2024 based on our interactions with different developers. We kind of tweaked the plan a little bit and summarized it to kind of coincide with what the market is supporting currently. One of the things that the village needs to focus on is housing. One of the biggest needs that we just hear from engaging with, with local residents is that there's a missing piece of housing. And we hear how much Winter Harbor is loved by people who have been here for generations, but there is a lack of housing for people who are empty nesters that need to, that want to downsize but stay in the community. Fortunately, we don't have that housing stuff right now. But potentially what we've been exploring is how does that fit, will, will our local economy support a development of, of that caliber, 55 and up active speakers? We're in the process of developing that, seeing if in fact it's, it's going to be able to, to happen. So when you talk about selling the vision, we have on that website, we have what our vision is. One of the visions that we're trying to sell doesn't mean it's going to happen, but when you're out selling a product, you got to show something. This is the triangle. The village has been working on this for the last three, four years. We needed to come up with an image. I'm sorry.
Twenty years.
The triangle?
Yeah. Oh, well, for I, yeah, the triangles and it's been about, for about 20 years.
Oh, I apologize. We just, we just, we just got this.
No, but the triangle was in conception for the triangle before I was on the board.
I didn't, I didn't know. I thought we just.
Well, he's talking about the specific.
Yeah, yeah. No, I know.
The triangle was in conception.
Right. But he's talking about the specific, this specific plan.
Yeah. And then we, we're going to new hotels under.
Let him continue with the specific plan he's talking about. I'm just, so. So let him continue with the specific plan he's referring to.
So the vision. This is what we're trying to sell. You have higher, higher level floors at the, at the far.
What is it, Jake?
The north.
Or the east.
So northeast corners of the triangle. So that's what we're selling. That's the vision. There has been some people kicking the tires about this. So now using the resources that we currently have is I've now engaged with Zion Benton High School. We are going to be talking to them about how we can incorporate high school students in painting that image that we have. This is a great floor plan, but if we're going to sell this, we need to go ahead and get some kind of visual exhibits to actually show what it's going to look like. And again, there's no money that's being invested. It's all being done in-house and the vision is being created by our community members, which I think is a win-win for everybody.
Absolutely. It's been ongoing for 20 years, that's all.
What we're talking about is all new. So let's continue on with talking about the future.
We talked about it before too, where we're going to build a hotel there and.
Well, we're talking about our new ideas.
Okay.
So let's continue.
Yeah. That should be in the mark for.
Well, what I will say is this, this corner, right, so Seventh and Sheridan, the two buildings that are structured there in the site plan can go four stories high, correct, based on zoning?
Yes, sir.
And then we, we put the standards in place that they would have to have kind of that nautical look and feel. I mean, this is a project that immediately set the tone of, of the village, and then when you look at something like 101 Sheridan Road as the gateway in, you know, with just a, a few projects, the, the look and feel, and I'll say, one of the, probably the best looking building now in town is the one that was just built for the storage on State Line, right? And they willingly chose to adhere to the downtown standards to say, oh, here's what a nautical looking building would look like. And to be able to picture that at a larger scale on some of these, these other sites that have more acreage and opportunity for, for mixed-use development, it's very exciting. And I appreciate the work that you and all the staff are putting in on this.
What we've done in the last just couple of years is build relationships with people that I've not seen in the 12 years that I've been on the board. And that's the most important thing is relationships with the developers that David's brought in from his past relationships in Lakemore and other places and in the new ones that we've met. The I C S E, that was, I feel, a shot in the dark going into that. And David even said, you know what, we might get nothing out of this, you know, and I was going to go to that and I got six, ended up being just David and Bob, right, so the two of you that went down there. And he was very, he was like, you know what, this is a big deal, we don't know, you know, who, but it's our first time going, we're going to see what it is. And there's actually, I think, one or two people that we're still in talks with about the community, correct?
That's right.
Yeah, with that, that are still interested in properties here and building those relationships. And there's a number of other developers, the brokers that we're working with about possibilities for commercial development, working on, looking into deals that would be low cost to us, that would only cost the village anything if they brought business to the village. So it would be a deal that would be worked out where they would only be getting something if we bring in sales tax revenue or things that are still in works. So these are things that are low-cost, high-yield initiatives that are something that we have not, you know, seen before. The ideas we're talking about are not what we've done in the past. These are new things and that's the only way that you grow economic development is to continue to work on these new ideas, which is what is, is being done here and is different than what we've done in the past. So I, for one, am excited about, about what we're, what we're working on here.
Well, this is huge. I mean, how many companies have even told us, we would love to come here, but you're going to need an initial project first. I mean, and now we have people actually interested in that initial, in that initial project, which will just snowball into growth and that will be huge for Winter Harbor. I mean, we just need that initial company to come in and really want to grow here. And again, we've already had multiple people say, hey, when that happens, call me because we want to come in too. They love the area, I mean, it's, it's huge. I mean, look at, look at what we could have. You see Kenosha, you see what can be done with a lakefront property like we have. I don't think people truly get how unique our, our location is. And I think there's just so much potential here and it's just going to be so nice once that initial project comes and just to see where things will take us in the next five to 10 years. I think it's going to be huge. And I just want to thank you for all, I mean, I know you don't sleep because I see your emails come through at 11:00 PM and again, at, you know, 5:30 in the morning. I mean, look at the websites you've built, you've put together, I mean, just slogans and new logos and everything is new. I mean, that's a hu, we needed like a regrowth. We needed something new because obviously what we've been doing over the last, what did you say, five times 20 years, obviously wasn't working. So it's, it's something huge that is going to come to Winter Harbor and you will basically be the one to be thanked for that.
It's, it's a group effort. It's a group effort, it's a passion. We have our namesayers, but at the end of the day, this is going to be, this should be what everyone's expectation is, is a lakefront property, a lakefront community, that the sales tax that we collect from the tourism will be reinvested in the daily operations of this village. Because if we don't grow our sales tax base, this village is going to be in trouble and we all know this. So it's all about thinking outside the box and doing what we need to do within our means to get the project done. If I may just continue and touch on the housing. The housing's very important. In our discussions with, with some of these developers, of course, rooftops are, they're a need. They're an essential, they're an essential of how we're going to promote this, this village. In talking to some of the, well, actually one in particular, home builder, we started to engage and we came up with a strategy, just like we're now opening or advertising for certain properties along Sheridan Road where we're helping people list their properties to see if we can get businesses in. One of, one of the concepts that now we're exploring is taking a look at these vacant lots in the undeveloped or the subdivisions that haven't been completed. Taking a look at those lots, seeing if we can get in contact with the property owner and seeing if we can go ahead and start marketing those. We have a lot of good, verifiable home builders in town. And just like discovertheharbor.com, we start listing those properties, we in turn will also start advertising to people who have already gotten building permits for new housing and again, starting to help our local economy, keeping the money in-house within our community. So under, under bullet point number three, housing priorities, you'll see that that's one of the things that we've added on there is working, is working with those property owners. And we just recently met with the property owners from Knightland Lewis and we hope that there's something promising coming their shop as well. So at the end of the day, the village is trying to provide the best level of service to anyone who wants to invest in our community.
Any more, Dave?
No.
Thank you, David. I agree. Stay away from wage and lunch. Need a vacation, but you can. Thank you.
You need to call.
May I? We move to clerk's correspondence.
New business committee reports, administration, community, volunteer committee.
Make a motion to approve the accounts payable warrants 2025-10 in the amount of $259,370 and sixty-six cents.
Any discussion on that? All right, roll call please.
Hargett.
Aye.
Mayor Bella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Wait.
Motion carried.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance, setting aside the rules of the president and the board trustees, the way the first second reading of the draft ordinance, repealing and replacing the Village of Winter Harbor Municipal Code, Chapter 158, signed code.
Second, any discussion on that?
So this is just what the EDC have been working on, then presented to the sign and zoning board, it's in your packet, it's just making some adjustments to simplify the codings and definitions from the beginning of the sign code to the end, which makes it a lot easier to find what you're looking for. And then also update the electronic sign code to allow for businesses to apply for a special use permit for electronic messaging and signs.
Very good, Dan. Yes, correct. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Hargett.
Aye.
Mayor Bella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Wait.
Motion carried.
Make a motion to approve a resolution adopting the tax increment financing application process policy for the Village of Winter Harbor.
If I may just add, that's part of the process. For the last, for the last three years, we've been kind of recovering from COVID, kind of regrouping. As part of our economic development initiatives, we have now, we wanted to put everything together for an application process that ensured transparency, ensured that, that there's other people, like for example, the Economic Development Committee will be the initial people that will be reviewing the tip, the tip funding applications with final decision coming to the public for it. In that application, we wanted to make sure that it was in this conception, so we did a, we did an overview of what a tip district is and also, most importantly, what a tip district in Winter Harbor, what cost it would cover.
Did I get a second?
No.
You're really soon to be talking about all the second.
No, it's all right.
Second.
All right.
You'll say, David.
That's all right. Any discussion on that?
And then I think we talked about it last, yeah.
Yes. Any discussion, roll call?
Hargett.
Aye.
Mayor Bella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Wait.
Motion carried.
And then discussion regarding chapter 90 of the Village of Winter Harbor Municipal Code, I will turn this over to David or Sanjay.
I can, I can jump in.
Oh, that's the chicken.
Ninety of the.
Did you send me any tickets? I didn't get any emails or any paperwork about this.
It's here for discussion.
Where's the documentation?
So at, at last month's meeting, we.
Thought I was going to get some emails or something about it.
You're not on Team Chicken.
Right today. That's what I get called about, you know.
So at the last village board meeting, we, we talked briefly about the potential of updating chapter 90, and this comes from multiple perspectives we discussed last week. One is interest within the village to expand on the existing ability to keep things like, like chickens, that we are a, a community without a grocery store. And so the ability to encourage people to do things like garden, to raise some of their own food, to know where it's coming from, and it, and it taps into what seems to be a growing movement. Also ties into some of our heritage as a, as a community that at one point had far more agriculture and backyard gardens. And so there's a health perspective, historical perspective, and then just a matter of, do we care about freedom?
I question that on the chicken. It's about, it's about the number and it's about the regulation.
Even the criminal freedom.
With that question, perhaps. So now with, with the background of how the discussion started last week, or last month, and there seemed to be interest in continuing the discussion, the way, after talking with Bob that would kind of frame this is, right, introduced it last month to now have more discussion this month, to narrow in to say, if we were to make changes, what is that draft ordinance to then bring forward next month for an actual vote? And so the couple of things that I wanted to look at here, and I realize, trustee McCarthy, you had asked about model ordinances.
Would he have lived over there when the bull was on the corner? When I did, he might have a different opinion about it because in his neighborhood, there was a bull right on the corner.
Well, I'm not going to presume his, his opinions, but I, I know he had, he had suggested one of those model ordinances out there that we may be looking to say, how do we replicate that thing? And that's the hard part of being a leader is.
I just wanted to know what, what I.
Yes, no, so I, I did, I did bring some of that to look at. So wanted to look at a few key pieces of this. So one is there is a section within this chapter on specifically on beekeeping, that today beekeeping is considered unlawful. And so wanted to see and gauge the interest of, of the board in allowing, one, I also know that there are people keeping bees and nationally, there's a lot of conversation around the need for more honeybees and pollinators and.
Pollinators in the garden.
Right.
My neighbor used to have them in my old house.
I, I did look, here, it seems that many communities have gone to allowing them, the, the county, their standard is it has to be 10 feet from a property line. And then most communities have some standard of, you know, up to a certain acreage you're allowed two and then right, it kind of builds up. So the county is, is two for 10,000 square feet of property and then it, it builds every 10,000 square feet of acreage that you have, you're allowed two additional hides. This is regulated at the state level, so if you want to raise bees, you have, which Lake County is the second, has the second most apiaries in, I'm learning new terms, in, in Lake County. And, and so it does seem to be growing. There's a Lake County Beekeeping Association in Grace Lake, if you'd like to learn more. But so it seems like one of those opportunities, if we're looking at this code to say, okay, do we, do we want to allow it and is that kind of county-wide standard seem like a good one, a very simply kind of 10 feet off a property line? So I've found a few others that they would reference things like you can't raise, you know, African killer bees, right? Or, you know, they, they're a certain aggressive species, but I believe, it seems like that's regulated at the state level as well, like you're registering, they have those subsets already outlined there, they handle the inspections and all of that. So how do you feel about bees and honey?
Justin.
Are you? Pro honey?
Yes.
If you have so much acre, like my neighbor used to do it because he had a ton of acres over there, so you get a tax break, agricultural tax break, or you have to plow your field. I mean, that's just part of it. And it pollinates your garden.
Well, but this is, you're giving an example of someone with lots of acreage, right? So what just one of the things is that this would be different for someone, you know, are you okay with your neighbor raising their own honey in their backyard?
Safe distance from my property, I believe, yes, because honeybees, as we know, they're not bees that can keep stinging, they sting once and they die. So my grandpa used to raise them right on Park Avenue and a lot of streets for years. So I've been stung a bazillion times because that's what he did. He had pigeons too. I mean, it, Winter Harbor used to be that community where you could raise birds and you could have bees. So I'm, I'm totally for it. I'm not against that at all. As long as there's moderations for people maybe who are allergic or, so you keep it off of their property line, I think that's the only thing we should look at.
I would love to. No, I'm out for it too. I mean, you got to write back next month.
Right, we'd have to draft the actual language on that. Next piece.
If you write, if you write that, let me know because I actually, actually I'd like to do this after right now. So let me know.
There you go. Next one would be considering the expansion from our, our current code allows for hens to replace hens with a broader category of domestic fowl. I do have examples here for you, Dan, our trustee McCarthy, of Nina, Wisconsin, population 27,000, also a lakefront community out of Lake Winnebago. Their stress is, so they allow various species of fowl, but they stress 25 feet from a neighboring residence and the, the priority in the policy is around keeping it clean, keeping it, right? You don't want to attract predators, you don't want to attract rodents, you want it, you don't want it to become a nuisance to, to neighbors. But so they were an example across Plains, Wisconsin.
That's one of the concerns, making sure that our vote is in line with what's known because I do deal with complaints, you know, when people aren't following COVID and that becomes an issue, so.
And I know that was part of our discussion, like, I, I think I shared the example, right? I have a neighbor whose dog gets out often. I, I don't, I wouldn't find it appropriate to say, well, the people shouldn't be allowed to have dogs because that neighbor isn't following the policy of, of keeping it contained, right? So there are, there are a number of examples that I have of communities that have broadened that definition. I, I will say, most of them are not in Lake County, we would be the first in Lake County to, to lead in that way. And so most of them, now I did try to specifically look at examples that are higher density than a rural community, right? So there's, there's lots of examples downstate Illinois, but it's high acreage and neighbors aren't there, right? So the, the examples that I was able to find were still, you're right, like I said, Nina, 27,000 people.
Mine's not a great example because it's in the higher acreage.
Right. But so wanted to know, is there consideration for expanding that category? And then the, the last piece is, as I was looking at different codes and comparing them to ours, ours doesn't. to ours, ours doesn't specifically require that a coop be in the side or rear yard, but it does look like many communities have that requirement, you can't have a coop in your front yard. Although I made the comments about freedom earlier, I'll raise this question, is, do we, do we feel that that should be added to require it to be inside or rear yard versus a front yard?
What if your yard's off, like on 11th Street, and the house is, and your house is to your back of my lawn? I mean, there's so.
So the current code does allow.
Places in Inlet Harbor that are.
The, the current code does allow for people to request variances to the situation, right? So there, there may be, and it's had the discretion of, of this board then.
But a variance is for hardship.
Well, so that's for a, so it's not a, it's not a planning and zoning board variance, it specifically highlights it as a, as a village board variance, right? So that at the standard, Bob, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but the standard that the board here is held to for something like this is different than the standard that the PCB is held to for a zoning variance?
If it, if it's a legitimate variance that can be granted by the village board, yes, that's the question. It's the first I've heard of this, my friend. You know, ideas cooking upstairs, sometimes you don't share them until we're sitting here. That makes it a little difficult for me to pop up with opinions at the last minute.
Well, I, we, we discussed it briefly at the last meeting, right, to bring it here for discussion, to know what that potential draft.
I'm just saying that I might not have a final opinion on that right tonight, but I'm sure I can come up with one.
Understood.
Can we call up the following?
Following. This is again where we put sense of humor in quotes. All right, and those were the main elements of that, and so I appreciate talking that through, and Bob, I will send you some of the examples that I have, and I actually have a marked up version already that I can share with you, anticipating how some of the conversation may go based on last month's discussion, and then we can work through that for next month.
Thank you, buddy. Thank you. Thank you, Trustee McCarthy, all right. Now, discussions, so we'll move on to public safety, Trustee Weiss.
Thank you, motion to approve, request approval to purchase new network fire wall appliance and enter into a three-year contract with Palo Alto Networks for support and updates to the amount of $4,686.50. This is covered by the 2024-25 budgets.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harkett?
Aye.
Mirabella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Motion to approve the purchase of medical kits, which each squad car would be equipped with one, $6,000 covered by less or account.
Second.
Okay.
Any discussion on that?
Yeah, the chief has, I did bring one that's, it would be very similar to this. Each bag would be able to treat five casualties, so there's five tourniquets, chest seals, and trauma bandages in there. Right now, the only medical equipment that the officers carry is what they purchase themselves, which is usually a tourniquet, the first aid, or one or two extras to help, you know, a victim, so this would give, by putting one of these in every mark squad, they'd have access to it to treat at least five, five victims. Next month, we do have, plan on having training in-house on using all this, everybody will be certified in first aid and how to use everything in the kit. The other thing about the kit is it's broken down into several smaller kits in there, so if there's an officer on scene, you can pull one of these out and give it to another officer that can go to another location without having to move the whole bag.
We're gonna do training.
Well, we're gonna have first aid training, it's called stop and lead.
Here?
Yes, it's gonna be done on shift, so there's no overtime.
Nice, could we can bring our guys with too, if we have to, public works guys?
Um, yeah, we can arrange for that, because we do have an instructor for that, so.
If we're paying for it already, I don't think there's a limit on the class, is there?
No, we're not, we're not even paying for the training.
Oh, nice.
It's just gonna be, he's gonna be going from shift to shift to get everybody done.
Nice.
Um, we're having some newer officers from Zion come, because they go through the same training, but they call the state and come and send an instructor down, so it's easier for us, and tell them if they want to send a couple of guys down during training, we'll bargain with them, they'll sit in on the training, and that's something we can do on a continuous basis, if anybody else in the village needs it, we can arrange time for, to get all the training done.
Yeah, no, that would be nice, I, obviously the fire department hasn't, but for the other departments, it would be good that somebody.
Yeah, we know that. At times, the fire department is second on the scene, I mean, that's the, the reality of it, that's why it's important to get all the squads equipped, because they're usually the first ones there.
Yep.
Or the kids, public works, they're there when it happens, so.
How many squads?
Uh, would be six mark squads, we're not gonna do the unmarked right now.
Okay.
The, the marked ones is where there's the need for them, right?
Let's say we had an incident the other day, that if we were trading in it, it would be good we had an incident with our guys.
Yes.
So, that's huge, if we're doing it, we could do it, because it would be them that do it to themselves, not the public.
I think the city of, where the police departments are being first, usually like in a car accident or other situation, but they're always there first, and they, if they're trained to do certain things, that they can all of a sudden start taking care of whatever needs to be done, and by that time, the paramedics would be there to take over, so it's critical, it's, it's life saving.
Harkett, any other questions? Thank you, chief. Roll call.
Harkett?
Aye.
Mirabella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Motion to approve a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Inlet Harbor and the City of Waukegan for the operation of a joint emergency telephone and dispatch system.
Second. Any discussion on that?
I just want to point out that I am extremely happy that we are able to partner together with my business. I personally work with the Waukegan Dispatchers every day, and they are exactly who you want on the other end of that line, I mean, their, their level of professionalism and dedication, you can really tell, it is the second to none, so very excited, I know that they can handle our call volume with these, I'm sure, I can't even imagine your call volume, so we'll be next to nothing compared to, and it's just nice that we can have a neighboring town applying us with that. I know, right as soon as we moved over to Mundaline, I placed a phone call to the police, there was a fight breaking out in front of the pawn shop, and I was trying to describe to the dispatcher that I couldn't see the address, but it's just the pawn shop, and I, you know, just being so far away, they don't understand, we only have one, you know, we only have a couple businesses, they, the officer would know the pawn shop, but it's just nice that now we'll have people who are more familiar with our location and familiar with, you know, the whereabouts and the lay of the land, so I think that's gonna be huge too.
Now, we met with Waukegan, in fact, a few months ago, and they were very receptive to, and explained everything to us, so I think it's gonna be a very good fit for our police and fire department dispatch.
And Mayor, just, just so everybody knows, this has been in the process for, for quite a long time.
Yes.
Lake Town, the, what the, the decision that the county made, I believe it's, it's great, when you start sharing resources, when everybody is on the same, on the same system, but unfortunately, with the way things were calculated, the cost was calculated, the funding model, it, it, it left us out, it left us out. We were expecting a 273% increase in our dispatch cost the first year, and the other, the other most concerning part was that we would be using our 911 surcharge money, which is approximately $105,000. So altogether, and unfortunately, also with Lake Town, the numbers weren't concrete. As you remember, we have representatives from Lake County here, we had some projections, but they weren't concrete numbers, and the other concerning part is that they still did not define the level of service that we were going to receive for that amount of money, there was possibly a lot of other à la carte services.
And it gave us no answers.
So currently, with, with the funding model, we were looking at about $173,000 a year for, for police dispatch. Waukegan came, Waukegan is $165,000, but the whole thing, the savings comes in that we're going to be able to use our 911 surcharge, which is $105,000, to bring down the costs, so total first year, we're looking at approximately $60,123. We are going to be joining, join ETSB board as part of this process, and the agreement that you see before you is both the dispatch contract and also at the ETSB, and we do have Tom Perfect, he's the communications director here, if you have any questions, any comments, or Tom, if you wish to address the board.
I didn't realize you were here.
I'm a Lake County one, they, they absorbed our money, but they, we keep our 911 money, and it goes towards, the Lake County one is gonna take our money away from us, but with them, it goes towards our fees.
Yes.
True, that's a true statement.
So, like Dave said, the, the Lake Town model is still unknown, and Waukegan recognized the same thing that you guys are recognizing, is that costing was uncertain for us, and so was the level of service, so there are a lot of things that they would not do for Waukegan. Waukegan is a very large city, we're the biggest city in Lake County, but to answer your, your question, we handled 179,000 phone calls last year, just for Waukegan, so that's a big call volume for our dispatch center to take on, and they didn't want to deal with our public works after hours, they didn't want to deal with our animal control, we surprisingly have thousands of animal calls a year, they also wouldn't handle that, and if they did, they would maybe be able to put a price out there, but couldn't say what that price would be. The costing model didn't match for Waukegan, as it doesn't for you guys, Waukegan was going to be charged significantly more than, say, Gurnee, who somehow ended up saving one, while the smaller towns ended up picking up the cost. There are still towns that I think are going to drop out of it, and, you know, we wanted to say, hey, we're gonna have an operation, and we're gonna keep it going, let's bring in other communities that are in the same boat, they have nowhere to go, you can't afford a large center that's spending $40 million on a building and a $190,000 salary for the director, who doesn't even have a dispatch center yet, so, although he's a great guy, I know him, and I think Lake Town has a chance of being successful, assuming they price agree.
Right.
But we wanted to say, hey, we're gonna build a new dispatch center, which we are currently in the process of doing, hoping to have a done day in April, early May, and up and operational, which I would say is about six times greater than our current closet, and you guys are more than welcome to, you know, reach out to me and go for a tour, and we have the Waukegan Airport. But yeah, so we're excited to have you guys, our first team's joining, as well as Tower Lakes, we're in the same position, 200-plus percent increase, and just gonna afford it, and it's kind of where Waukegan was at, so we're making a large investment now, and it'll pay off over time, and we will provide the same service they were used to, we will know the town, my dispatcher lived in Inlet Harbor, so, we're familiar with the area.
So the building's at the airport?
Yeah, so it's, it's an existing building, it's an office space that we planted 5,000 square feet of, and are renovating it for an analog center.
So it's on the east side, or is that where it is?
Yeah, it's the main, it's the main terminal, the airport off and entry.
Now, you know, thanks for, you know, showing us your existing dispatch, which is tiny, but definitely would like to have a tour.
Oh, absolutely, it, it's under construction, so it's, you know, obviously under construction, but it's, it's coming along very quickly, our contractors are working great to make sure that we're on a timeline, our biggest hiccup right now is the war, the war in Israel, we're not allowed, our product comes from Israel, so there's a back border on that, but they have put Waukegan as a priority nationwide, so we're hoping that in April.
Well, thanks for everything.
I just wanted to add, for those who aren't aware, the way Lake Town presented this originally, you know, was like, there was no other option, you know, for all of Lake County municipalities, I mean, correct, David? You know, it was presented like, you know, oh, everyone's gotta join, this is the only option, you know, and as I said, you know, they didn't have solid numbers, no one knew, you know, it's like, but this is it, you know, everyone's joining, you gotta do it, but David and a number of other village managers worked countless hours to find other solutions, and thankfully, you know, they did, because, you know, it saved us a lot of money, and a lot of other communities, we appreciate, you know, Waukegan and the other leaders, you know, doing that and taking the time, because I know it was a lot of time on David then, because I was asking, like, is this even worth it, we're spending so much time on this, are we even gonna get to do this, are they gonna force us to, you know, to go along with it anyways? But, you know, it, it paid off, and, and in the long run, it's gonna save us lots, so appreciate the time it was spent on your part and on all the people who did it, apart to really, you know, fight for this, and hopefully eventually, you know, Lake Town might figure it out, and we're able to find, you know, something that will do it down the road, you know, that'd be great, but until that can happen, this is, you know.
The key factors in the consideration was afford, was first and foremost, can they do the job? I've had relationships with Waukegan for now over 25 years, and definitely you can do, you can do the job, and then second of all, was the affordability, for a community our size, that shift is either a patrol officer or somebody else in another department, so it was definitely the right choice.
And I sat in on one of those calls with, you know, fire departments and municipalities, and just, you know, people were frustrated and, you know, and worried, and, you know, because they just, yeah, thought four's into this, and the money that they're losing, so I'm just glad that, you know.
We did our due diligence.
Yes.
Well, I always say that, David, I was in some phone calls in his office when he made that, and he was brainstorming on this, and with the relationships that he's built in the last 20, 25 years, came to provision, and helped us in other communities, you know, and that, that's, that's really critical, and that's important, and the amount of money that we're seeing, for all the communities that are in the same.
And I'm sure you guys know this, but he wanted to, he was the initiator of this, for the entire group, it originally started with more towns, so I went back out, and with the Lake Town option, that's fine.
And they be coming.
Yeah, they might be coming to you.
And I think some of the, the worry was, we didn't have the dispatch center being built yet.
I appreciate you mentioning that, yeah.
You know, so, that was some of the, you guys say you're building a dispatch center, but you haven't started yet, well, there was a lot involved in building a dispatch center in the airport, we had to get federal approval and exemptions and all that stuff, which delayed us, but we are, we're excited to go. We secured everything, we paid for everything, we bought everything already, so it's a matter of putting it together, and hopefully, I can, I told David, if we have to, if you guys are in a position with your current dispatch center, where they say, we want you out now because they're going to Lake Town, we'll figure it out, we'll make it happen.
I mean, it's a huge deal for us. I mean, we, again, I, I've said it before, okay, again, we're on a two-string budget, so with Lake Town, there were so many variables, so many unknown variables, I know, Trustee Brayden and I weren't exactly easy on them with our questions, and, to say the least, and they couldn't answer basically any of them, I mean, and there's, there's nothing more than someone who operates on a, you know, very, very unable to fluctuate as far as money goes, with all these different variables, especially financial variables, we can't make that decision, and so this is huge, that it's much more of a concrete number, we know what we're gonna get, and there is not five-year commitments with, you know, who knows what the upcharges and the increases, and the, what was it, the, the debts that might occur, and so I, this is definitely helpful for us.
They have approved a budget for their first operating year, but not provided any cost to any agencies, so they've already approved a budget and don't even know what they're coming in yet, until. until we're ready, so. And I don't, one of Dave's worries was with Waukegan, um, you know, we do have a change in political parties and such pretty often. Um, I can assure you though, our, our city council, um, our alderman would be very upset if this was even brought up to a Lake Town, so Waukegan's not going anywhere. We're, we're already three-plus million dollars in it, so it's, it's interesting.
Now, we had a phone conversation with someone from the county board, and they said, well, you can't afford it, you know, if you don't think you can afford it, just go out for a taxidermy.
Yeah.
Seriously? That, that's no way, it's not even a subject that I went up and talked about.
Not, not for, it won't go.
Yeah.
That's definitely what we do, but that, that's a, I think, ask for something that is a required service, so.
Thank you so much for all the work that you've done, David.
No, thank you guys for being patient with us. I know you guys worked, getting close to, um, you know, getting worried, or probably worried that no Dave was, uh, but we got it done, we, there we go. And I've already checked with the state and everything, we will definitely get where ETSB belongs. They, they, Lake County doesn't have any rights to them, once we enter into joining ETSB and it's a matter of us, just how many, the money comes to us, so.
Tom, thanks for coming.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Uh, as a side note, my full-time employer is Lake County, and so when we vote, I'll be passing, but just wanted to state why.
Uh, mayor, yes, uh, staff's recommending that we approve it pending final legal review.
Okay.
I flagged a few things in the sub-layers, you know, it's all...
Okay, go figure it out, folks. Okay. Okay, any other discussions? Okay, Rokoff.
Harkett.
Pass.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, thank you trustee Weiss. We move on to public works and recreation. Trustee Mayor Balla.
Uh, make a motion to approve the invoice for a concession building worth in the month of eleven thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars to own and building and remodel.
Second, hey, okay.
So this is funded by the Lions Club, so just to shout that this is a project that the Lions Club took to heart, and they've been gracious and a bunch of stuff they, uh, have done for us, and this is one of the things they wanted to do, so.
Terry Sherman with the Lions asked me last Thursday, is that on the agenda for eleven thousand, sure is, so. All right, uh, Rokoff.
Harkett.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Second item I have is a motion to approve the use of a community center for a community forum on March eighth, two thousand twenty-five, and have the associated beings waived.
Okay.
This is something Margot Nelson spearheaded, and she's, uh, done this in the past years, and she thought she wanted to do this, done this before, so she, it was a problem, she gave it to me, but I told her she didn't.
A problem. Rokoff.
Harkett.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Weiss.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Last item is a motion to approve to host the P O W W wrestling event on Saturday at maintenance, two thousand twenty-five, with financial impact of twenty-five hundred dollars for the show.
Second.
And this is just something I thought we were very successful on last time, trustee Whitmore, and the best that I do, uh, got a good crowd in there, and people seemed to liked it, and, you know, went over well, and I think we made money on it.
Yeah, it's all expenses, we're right about sixteen hundred.
Right.
Um, and I, I think there was another, kind of a calendar conflict in the area, so there was a lot of people who weren't able to attend.
Right.
Um, and so this, I'm excited for this one, I think.
And the money that we make from this, probably reinvested back into the parks, yes.
Which was something I bet for three years, and told, it wasn't ever able to happen, and I asked David, and he was like, yeah, why wouldn't you do that? So, that's huge. I mean, we've been able to transform the Parks and Rec Department, which is really nice.
Yes, it is.
Nice to have a working fridge.
Well, please come out and be attentive to the P O W W wrestling.
They seem to like it, I mean, they've been good partners for...
Oh, yeah, so you say that, we're one of their favorite ones to come to. We have people, I mean, just to put this out there, um, that, that is totally going into the weeds, but we have people travel from Michigan, Pennsylvania, uh, we're also in Indiana, Minnesota, for these wrestling shows. So, I mean, it brings many ton of people from, not just outside the community, outside of the state, um, to come here, so that's really cool. I mean, it's nice to get people in here that wouldn't normally come, so it brings a lot of, a lot of visitors.
Yeah, they have their, uh, their following with their organizations, so it's a good mix of our own, like local crowd, and, um, like their, their fan base that comes, so maybe we look at how we can capitalize on that, and see...
Well, we get to work with local restaurants and, you know, offer some specials, or try to tighten the businesses with this, just to try and gain some more revenue off of it.
Did I, did I hear that the mayor was gonna get in the ring, that we have to get a community poll for his wrestling name?
Yeah.
We should have like a contest, like the strongest, like, uh, like the strongest with the parlor person, like, you know.
Well, I got to know my, my neighbor's two boys, third and fourth, yeah, third and fourth major, that's the last two, that's the only action.
I know, because I'm a creative.
I couldn't believe, I've never seen that side of these two boys.
Well, it's cool because wrestlers love the kids that are there. So, I mean, they interact with the kids a ton, I mean, there was a, I think it was the first one we did, um, it was one of the baseball teams kind of brought all the boys, and they had so much fun, and the wrestlers had so much fun with the boys, so, I mean, that was, that was really cool. It's really nice to have some more activities.
My teenage daughter, she should get pictures with them like every time, but she's got a favorite one, but she's like, oh, I gotta get a picture with that, kinda, a picture, she hangs around and gets, you know, pictures with them.
Very good, any other comments?
I've got a title for you.
What?
The incredible mayor.
Mayor. Put that on my teacher.
Oh, great.
All right, Rokoff.
Harkett.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Weiss.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you trustee Mayor Balla. We move on to public comments. If anybody would like to address the board, we just ask you to provide us your name and your address. Mike Street, how are you doing?
My name is Mike Street, and, uh, I've given the clerk kind of a little background and, uh, a handout to each one of you. Just, uh, about me, I am candidate, uh, township supervisor, I've been on the board eight years, and, uh, Larry Boyce decided he wasn't running, and talked me into running, didn't have to talk too much, but I tried, I didn't, wasn't as successful in talking him into staying, but I've enjoyed being on the board for eight years, and I wanna continue on what we're doing there. And I just wanted to make sure you knew officially that I am running for that. And, uh, my number's on there, my email's on the thing that should be passing out. Any questions, please feel free to ask.
Thank you, Mike. Come on.
Good evening. So I'm Amy Omen, also running for Benton Township, and I'm here to let you know why. Um, I have, uh, history in local government, high registration, and I've worked for township government for over eleven years. As Benton Township supervisor, I'm looking at it as my next career role. Um, knowing the needs of the community is a priority, physical responsibility, community service and collaboration, relationship building, I've heard a lot of that tonight through different discussions, and we need to build that to, um, continue to improve our township and village. I'm a visible person within both communities. I serve on our police commission board, and I have been on the library board for ten years, four years as the president. So, um, with that visibility, I will remain with the community, and look forward to serving. Um, I'm a servant leader who is dedicated and willing to dedicate myself to the township. Um, I did not have anything presented before, but I do have cards, and if there's questions, concerns, I'd be happy to communicate with some of the communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you up?
Hi.
Hello.
Um, my name is Erin Bostleman, and I don't have an address yet, but I did just buy some property in Winter Park.
Oh, welcome to it.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say hi, because I might have to say other things in other months, and I just wanted to introduce myself when I don't have anything formal to present, but just to say hi.
So you bought property?
Yes, sir.
Where at?
Thirteenth Street.
Okay. Vacant property?
Yes, sir.
You're gonna build a house?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, you'd be talking to Sanjay.
We already know each other.
All right. Bravo. Anything you need?
Have a great night.
Please don't let us know.
Will do.
All right, I'll make it.
Not usually this long.
Mr. Redd. Hi, everyone. Uh, you guys know me from last year, but I'll tell you a couple of fun things to the community, and we're gonna continue doing that this year. Just wanted to come up and, uh, talk about a couple of ideas I wanna do. Um, last year we did the block party, it was the first time we'd done something like that, and people loved it. Uh, pretty much saw almost everybody there. Uh, it was a great time, didn't have any negatives from anybody, other than one person who was concerned about traffic, and it wasn't even a negative, it was just a question, kind of answered, she was happy. Uh, so this year, we're looking at Living Folk Kombucha and myself, and I've brought, talked to several other businesses, we wanted to incorporate more businesses. That was the one negative from last year that I'll take from it, was that we didn't go big enough, but it was also the very first time.
Yes.
So next year, I'd like to incorporate a lot more businesses and make this a lot larger, um, a larger, uh, time block for bands and more things, and then increasing stuff to do for the kiddos. And I'm talking with Community Three-Sixty-Five, they're gonna become involved in that, but over the next couple of months, we're gonna be working on putting that together and coming forward the board for that, uh, approval for all of that. Uh, the date we're looking at is August thirtieth, so we'll put that on our calendars, and we'll start moving forward with that. Uh, I do have a second idea that I wanted to put together. We tried last year a little bit, but kind of the weather came in on us before we could get it going, but, uh, I'm an Antioch resident, I own Harbor Cafe over here at eight-eleven, Sheridan Road, but, um, Antioch had a wine walk, and it drives business. It brings in people, people come from all over to come to this wine walk. And they do them multiple times a year to the point, that's so good for them that they do multiple types of walks like that. And I'd like to create something like that here, going up and down Sheridan, uh, incorporating not just the bars or restaurants, but also incorporating other businesses like Netgar, Wenzels, and other businesses as well that don't have a liquor license, but how does Antioch do it, where you can go into a dress shop and they have a liquor license for, for tasting that day? I think we should be able to do that here as well, incorporate all of our businesses and the, uh, and the village hall. So people need to know what you guys are working on here, if they don't come to meetings.
Um, can I add, share something to that, is, uh, Illinois, each, uh, the state does have a full-time naturalist now that is onsite within, so if, if you were to want to do something on the lakefront and, and talking about, you know, the wildlife and using the trail system, we may be able to make that connection.
So my initial thoughts, and this of course will put together a small committee with some folks that's interested together, but to drive the business into our downtown area here. So I see people drive right through town all the time, no one's stopping. Let's get, let's get, let's keep doing some things to get people into businesses, up and down Sheridan, Seven, you know, all the way down, you know, VFW, all these can be incorporated in. Now, um, the ones who are outside of that area, my initial thoughts are, why can't they set up in this park over here? Set a Stone Creek to come and do food over here, and I've already talked with Performance Foods, who is their supplier as well, they're gonna donate stuff for them to make for these events, so it's, you know, they're already on board, so I've already got some corporate sponsorships coming from outside. But we'll be looking at, um, what our budget's gonna be, and where we can go with that, and how much it's gonna cost us to put this event on and bring it before everybody and incorporate more into this and grow this into something larger. But definitely for the village and for the naturalists, if you'd like to be there too, definitely tent, we can have on the street like we did last year. Uh, last year, we didn't have anyone on the street, because we've only closed northbound, but maybe it could be something that we expand larger to and have tent in the street to incorporate the naturalists or anybody, but of course, that's up to Chief over here, what he thinks, safety, uh, safety for it all. But last year, what really...
Community Center also, because there's parking there, and you could put, incorporate putting in your so-called tents or your little...
Yes.
...areas at the community center, because there's parking available, and if you're gonna incorporate Southern Street into it.
Exactly, so, I mean, we got all these ideas that could be there, that we could incorporate so much more than, last year was just a sampling of what we could do. I think the public's, at least I've heard nonstop that they want that, they want more. And, um...
Well, they're just, they used to do everything at the IGA, and they did say part of our, and that's...
Yeah, I've heard, before my time in the town, I, I've heard that.
So that was the closest thing they've had to that, other than things we do at the park, so they kinda liked that it was on Sheridan.
Yeah.
Was in that area incorporated.
We did real small last year, I wanted, uh, one of my, two things I'm going to push for hard is, I'd like the bands, the battle of bands from Zion Benton High School, I'd like them to be able to play, and, um, some more local things, but I will be looking at a national touring act to come in. Uh, so I have some contacts for that, and, uh, you know, get pricing down on some things, so we can make something really fun with that, so.
Why, there's a question. Have you not ever gone to the, uh, Antioch wine walk? Uh, they, they drank and then they walked to the next one.
So it's not a full course, it's a tasting course, so...
Just a little bit.
The idea for it is, um, on the wine walk, these would be tickets that would come from, uh, we would sell the tickets through the village, or however we, you know, we'd come up with to do that, and people would buy their tickets, and they would start off at one of, this is just my vision of how to do this, to make it smooth. So one of six spots, and depending on how many tickets we say, maybe twenty people start at the VFW, twenty people start at Time Out, twenty people start at the Village Hall, you know, and split them up so they're not all on top of each other. And the cores are gonna be, uh, bringing in our local beers, so we talked obviously with Harbor and some of the other local breweries, and with some of the local wineries, well, not really anymore, because the one shut down on Seventy-Three. But, um, with the liquor stores, we could get some different wines in, but, um, each person that would come out to it, we'd get a tote bag, and in that tote bag would be, um, literature or samples or something from all our area businesses. So everybody gets that little tote bag to go, and then they get a little wine glass, and on that wine glass could be a corporate sponsorship sponsoring the Winter Harbor Wine Hop. I wanna call it my walk, because hops got to bring in the beer. And each station would have one type of beer and one type of wine, and it's just a sampling, you're not pouring full glasses, it's just a sampling. And then the people can go up and down the street to the different places and see the different businesses. So maybe they've never been in Wenzels, for example, and they can go in, it showcases the business, or Netgar over here, and that's, that's just my idea with it, just growing more of our businesses here.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, great idea.
And just to add, based on our meetings, um, where you're looking for, for possibly for the village to explore the options, uh, to amend our liquor code for, allow for that tasting, for that, the one day, uh, for that one-day event, correct?
Yes, if Antioch can figure it out and how to do, obviously there's a code somewhere out there, maybe when you talk to Antioch or Fox Lake or one of the...
We have, we have, we have someone that was really close to that.
You have, I wrote it in the X, but... I go into it all the time, I know a lot of it too, but I'm not a attorney.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, so that's something we could do there, and, um, obviously there's some funding available from some of your tours and dollars and things that could be maybe used towards this too, because that goes towards everything, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Move on to unfinished business. I'll start down with trustee Whitmore.
Okay, sorry, I know everyone's already been here for tomorrow, but it won't be long. So I want to go over a pilot program overview for golf carts in our community. So the village of Benton Township approved the pilot program allowing some tax-operated North Point Marina to use golf carts on Seventh Street and Sheridan Road within the Marina's public roads from two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four in compliance with Illinois law. They obviously have to be equipped with things like slow-moving signs. So the village board reviewed traffic conditions, determined non-highway vehicles can safely operate in this area. As of right now, the pilot program only applies to some tax-operated golf carts, but we would be looking at expanding that based on public interest and then obviously safety. Given the program's success and efforts to market Winter Harbor as more of a recreational community, more of a natural, natural destination, I would like to recommend expanding the golf cart program to allow village-wide and only village streets, obviously you cannot be on state or county roads. But this expansion would enhance accessibility, really obviously more accessible for local businesses. We have a parking situation, so I think this would really help as well. So I propose working with the village administrator, police chief and village attorney to review safety considerations, legal requirements, enforcement measures and then potential benefits for both residents and businesses. And so it's useful, the expansion would enhance recreational and support local businesses while maintaining public safety. And then I'd appreciate just the board's feedback, whether or not you would like to move forward, just kind of going more into what that expansion would look like.
People have been waiting for this for a long time, so I'm glad you finally brought it to, because it's Benton. When we allowed it down there, the big feedback I got was, well, if they're letting it do it over here, why are us people that live on the west side against it? And we have two red lights also, which I think if we have to cross, which it would be only the one if we only use our village roads, Seventh Street, and you just have to cross there, that could be the one crossing. And we can do that to really.
The way Winter Harbor is set up is ideal to cross at those stoplights. Obviously, we have connecting streets on both east and west side that would make it very feasible for people to get to those red lights to be able to cross Sheridan. So I've been asked this, ever since I got on them, I think the first week I got on the board, that was kind of like the most important question.
I'm for it.
Did the pilot, were they, did they have drivers for their golf carts? Were they shoveling people or they had golf carts available for people to take?
More of a rental program.
I believe it was a combination of rental and driver.
Yeah, they were, I mean, obviously they were using them for the employees, their staff uses them all the time down there. But then I believe they were renting them out as well for the voters. Well, and that's huge for our voters too. I mean, that's kind of one of the biggest issues is, not that it's a far walk, but it's a far enough walk where if you were able to have golf carts in town, then it's gonna bring hundreds of people up to Sheridan Road quickly.
And more people down. For child's places, because I don't think the residents could take a golf cart down there.
Is it specifically golf carts or is it non-highway vehicles, like whatever that category is?
We're gonna start with golf carts.
Yeah, right.
Start with golf.
The other ones, you have to have, some people have, but you have to have license, you have to have working terms and those like, that's the road right there. And first.
I tell you, let's have this discussion, I'm for it too.
Also, we do have fundraiser this Saturday from eleven to three at the Schleter Building. We are still looking for anyone who wants to volunteer. Also, we do need cakes for our cake box, so any cupcakes, cakes, cookies. They do have to be packaged from a store, can't be homemade. They can be dropped off at the Schleter Building at any time. Oh, and I do just want to give another, congratulations to Community Three Hundred and Sixty-five. It is definitely a award well deserved, so just want to say congratulations and good job.
Thank you trustee Whitmore. Trustee Perry.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Congratulations and thank you to Community Three Hundred and Sixty-five and just if anyone out there watching the video wants to volunteer, they could use volunteers and reach out to them, please, because I know people could use a break from that. And then.
Who wants his wife back?
The other big thing I just want to mention is really big thank you to staff for all the hard work on getting the information out on the water rates and info on that. There's a ton of information out there on water meter replacement and the water rate increase. And really please read that information, especially on how, understanding how the water and super operations are funded. I mean, that's really significant when people look at that and see the increases. It's really important to know how it's funded. The village isn't, you know, making profits off this, you know, it's really about, you know, you're paying for the water that you use. And that typically the village, you know, has to raise rates because otherwise the village takes a loss and then the money has come from somewhere else on it. And the new water meters are to ensure that, you know, that people aren't losing water. So just big thanks to David again and the staff for that. It was a lot of work to put that website together, put the information that went out there together, so, thank you.
Thank you trustee Perry. Trustee Weiss. Trustee Harpitt.
I have nothing. No chicken?
Yes, I have chicken.
So, yeah, congratulations to Community Three Hundred and Sixty-five. It's a big honor for, to grow ours, it was a huge part of our community. Them doing that award and then giving that to you guys, it's pretty big. So we should be proud of this. We have the fundraiser, like you said, we are lacking in people, really make, especially for the afternoonship, everybody's bored. I need something to do and watch a bunch of little kids run around and collect little toys. I'll be there, just gotta do something, Scott's got me, we got that. Basketball is postponed this weekend for that reason, but then it starts back up. Hopefully this is our last frigid, icy week. We have a full salt barn and our stuff has been good. I think our guys do a great phenomenal job on removing the snow and getting ahead of the game. So with the little, and we're down a guy because one got injured, so just know that you guys are out there busting their butts, not that the police and fire department, but everybody, it's a community effort, so just know that our community guys are doing well. That's all I got, be safe and watch the kids walking because as it gets cold, people tend to forget the kids are still walking in the school.
They're running, they're running. Thank you trustee Marybella. I need a motion to go into closed session regarding personnel with no action taken. The move.
Harpitt.
Aye.
Marybella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.